Call to order an established form at seven oh two on August nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Roll call. Jan?
Here.
Amy?
Here.
I'm here. Lisa?
Here.
Dana?
Here.
Russell?
He's here.
He's here. Will you please stand with us for the, uh, can I just declare?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor, protection, flag, pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Housie, will you lead us in prayer tonight?
Sure.
We have him on our heads with us while Mr. Housie leads us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for all your blessings you give us each day, Lord. We ask your presence in this meeting today and give the council and the citizens guidance to discuss those things that are important to the city. Be with us, Lord. Give them the intelligence and the wisdom to do these things. And give us our sins now, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Citizens comments. Tom Housie, removal of property from city limits.
Yeah. Just wanted to get a clarification on item seven A. Uh, I don't know how deep the conversation is going to get into that tonight or what what's going to be revealed to us, but, is he asking for this property to, what?
Could you use the mic, sir?
Mike?
That's not even on. Turn that on.
There we go. Yeah, he's on, saying this whole shit's on.
There you go, sir.
There we go. Just, uh, my concern is, uh, we need some clarification on that item seven A. Uh, is he asking for removal of this property, whoever he is, from the city limits, uh, because of, uh, tax avoidance, city tax avoidance, or is it for, uh, circumventing some zoning restriction that might, uh, otherwise be not listed in an zoning map? Uh, I just think it needs clarification to everyone so that they understand what's going on here. This could be a costly and potentially dangerous precedent that could be set here if someone can just arbitrarily remove property from the city limits and do with it whatever they like. Thank you.
Circle. Debbie Crawford, speakers?
I don't need that. I have a very loud voice at every. Uh, Eddie Frye brought up, he was gonna look into something for us. I see we have a speaker there. Can you connect microphones to each one of you to that? Something needs to be done. We can't hear when you talk to each other. We can't hear, unless it's me, uh, when someone speaks up here, so we need to get this problem alleviated, especially with the, uh, air conditioning on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Page one, minutes from special meeting held July first, twenty twenty four.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from the special meeting held Monday, July first, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from regular meeting held on July fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July fifteenth, twenty twenty four meeting with corrections.
All in favor?
Aye. Amy?
Amy. Sorry.
Financial report, May twenty twenty three to current.
Mr. Mayor, seeing as how city staff is still working through the process of reallocating miscellaneous expenses from the past administration, and we do not have financial statements that match the bank balances, I make a motion that we table the financial reports until next meeting.
Does that get that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accounts payable for August twenty twenty four.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask if you had any concerns or questions about any of the payables that are on this report?
Can I clarify one item? Um, on the bottom, it says, uh, T V services, that was approved last night. There was a mistake when the check was sent, so it had to be resent. Uh, and since we had to resend it, they gave us a forty-nine dollar discount.
It's on the bottom of the general, second.
Yeah.
Might seem nothing I can test to. Yeah, might seem nothing I can test to.
Mr. Mayor, do you know why the Bureau Veritas amount is so high? Or does anybody have any ideas about what's going on?
It's not been paid since May of twenty-three.
It's not been paid since May of twenty-three?
From May of twenty-three to current. That's, that's why it's so high.
Why hasn't this? For our instructions.
Yeah.
So this will bring us up to date, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, let's, unless there are any other items anybody has any concerns about, I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to pay the accounts payable for August of twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Section six, information reports. Utility slash public work departments. Right here, I have the, uh, meter reading updates. There are three hundred and two meters on meter reading worksheet, all but six were read for July billing due to this August. Two meters are blocked, two need to be replaced, and one had an access issue and one a city well. They were read by Hugo and Grady, with a few re-reads on seven twenty-five. The annual water tanks have been completed. Inspections have been completed. Recommendations are both water wells are now working. Well two needs, well two needs the meter replaced. The meter is needed to record the water pump. This, he fixed two lift station issues. Fixed the sewer leak on Cotton and Cottonwood in Redner. And Patterson helped address PSEC violations from prior administration. We're currently working on sewer plant mode, having a sewer plant mode to address the violation and.
That's being completed now.
The sewer plant's been mowed to address that violation. And have warning signs been posted?
Yes.
And warning signs have been posted at the sewer plant. We, uh, and I'm meeting with them Wednesday to talk about a fence around it. Volunteer fire department?
Hey, Mayor, we do not have an, uh, volunteer fire department, uh, report for this month. However, we will have a, a one for next month, uh, because they wanted to give us a, uh, update on our financials in that report next month.
Okay. We move on to administration department, Labor Day, it's September second. Will be closed. Feeding fanning is September twenty-third, or September twenty-third, I'm sorry, September third. And we're spraying for mosquitoes on September twelfth. Old business. Consider removing property upon East Main and Highway fifty from Ladonia City Limits, approximately fourteen acres.
A letter attached to just for history, so y'all know where this came from. We're not talking about zoning, not just the possibility of being.
Is something like that, uh, for action on, or is it a legal process that he would have to go through or request it?
I think there's one of the two ways we can send it. Like a reservist plan, part of geography, it was town place, it's a.
Okay.
That's it. After that, you can't do.
I mean, to hold a public hearing and do all that kind of stuff?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like the city attorney to share his thoughts on.
Of course. Years and years and you, no, I can talk about, years ago, um, cities were in a rush to annex land. And y'all might remember, that's the reason Honey Grove City Limits runs three or four miles outside of town. The one in Paris came out and got my office, the first two hundred feet of it. And the, the reason for that was the legislature changed the law up on annexation for cities. And it's, it's almost next to impossible now for a city to annex land unless that land is adjacent to someplace already in the city. And the person wants it that way. The other side of the coin is also true. They changed how you get out of a city. And I have researched this just recently. As far as I know, there are two ways to disannex from the city. One is the failure of the city to provide services. So was there a service plan? And the service plan is trash pickup, water, if there's law enforcement, that, fire protection. Whatever the city promised as a part of annexing that land, if the city didn't fulfill its promise, the owner can say, hey, guess what? You didn't fulfill the contract and I want out. The other one is a math problem. How many acres? How many people live on that acreage? Uh, and you would need to have that data before you could even start up. Okay.
Thank you.
You can't do anything on this.
Right.
Not denied anyway.
Right.
What would the trigger for reconsideration be?
If you got that data, um, that, that's required from that, it's sparsely populated areas. Things that sit next to cities, like in the ETJ, and somebody actually got annexed in. And it's like there's one residence per so-and-so or one business for so many acres. Uh, and I can send that to the city secretary. I'll send it to all you guys. Here's the criteria. Somebody's got to come in and you've got to have that criteria before you can say, we want to do it or we don't want to do it.
Okay, great. So this request on the second page of what they specifically want to use land for does not qualify?
My understanding is that the use of the, what they want to use it for, the future use, is not a reason. You can't get out for that reason. It's, it's what's on there right now.
Yep. All right.
All right, so I'd make a motion that we table item seven A until city attorney returns actionable information.
I'll second that.
Say that again.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we ask which that is? Is it Ophelia Lamb's old place or is it some new property that just went up for sale?
It is the, it is the southeast east corner of Main and fifty.
Across from east side, right?
Yes.
That's okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
Seven eight. Approved budgets for September twenty twenty four?
Basically, I don't know if it was mine. Yes, we're working on budgets. We have to keep in mind that we have to take the tax, also ten percent.
Right, this is just our interim budget though, for, to get us through the rest of this full year.
So will we approve the budget tonight and then that ordinance next month? How would that work?
Um, we did not. Ask your question, Mr. King.
You're at that point where it's time to plan the budget for the next fiscal year, but there's not a budget for this year. So what I understand this to be is some sort of interim operating budget to get the city through until the next budget is planned. You can do this by resolution or by vote of the council. The next one, most cities adopt their budgets by ordinance. And so you'll need to have a budget ordinance when you do the next one. That's how most cities do it.
Okay, so interim budget can just be accepted by resolution or vote?
Okay. So I make a motion that we accept the interim budget to get us through this fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Section eight, new business. Alpha, city attorney attendance at city council meetings. Almost lead us off on this one.
I mean, I'll, I'll start. I think the, the question was posed due to how much was being spent to, to, uh, pay Mr. Hamilton. However, when you look at the invoicing in particular, it wasn't because he was here at these meetings. It was everything else he was having to do. It was every single phone call, every single email, every single, whatever he got from the city, the prior city secretary. We have resources that are available to us for free, such as T M L Legal. And they will give you the information that you need. A lot of that information probably could have been gleaned from them, but instead it was going to Mr. Hamilton. Are, would you be in agreeance to use them as our first line source?
You can. I will tell you what.
And they will tell you definitely, check with your city attorney.
Run this by the one that's going to be doing it. But yeah, you can, you can type them in and say, hey, here's the issue. Here's what, here's what we need to know. And, and they will send you, sometimes they'll send you articles. They'll send you things that they have written, which kind of give you a background. And then it might be your, the best use of your money to say, oh, guess, I don't like to be compared to another lawyer. And I don't know many that do. And so I don't want you fact checking me through T M L. I'd rather have it the other way around. You're going to use them as your first source.
Oh, that's a definitely.
Say, okay, yeah, uh, here's what we found out about them, which saves me from sending them an email too, saying, what do you guys think about this? So you get that data and you say, here's what we want to do. Because the problem in email lawyering is all the facts will always get explained in an email. Whereas you and I sitting here talking about, you can go, here's where we start, and that's taking a lot of time. Really does. Takes a lot of time. Uh, speaking of time, if you've been here in some of the previous meeting, I have said out loud, uh, we didn't get really started on the agenda at seven forty-five or seven fifty at night. I notice now we got through the, uh, citizens' comments at seven oh seven. We got through the consent agenda at seven twelve. We got through the in information reports by seven fifteen. We got, and we started the old business here at seven twenty. So you've already kind of sort of weeded some of that out. And I agree, it's not a good idea to have your, your city attorney to sit here and watch those things. But I would say, on the other hand, probably at these agendas and these meetings is where some of the, some of the issues start. And might be a good idea to have your lawyer sitting here, at least for those who think that that person is, has some data on like annexation. Uh, might be a good idea. Then other than that, I can, I can sit down at the end of all these and say, either I should be here or I shouldn't be here, or some of these. Go on.
I think another good example is the conversation we just had about the budget. Because I would have, you know, based on our, our past process, would have thought, we approved the budget, we ordinance it, we approve the ordinance, right? And he just, he just saved us a ton of time.
So what do y'all think? And then may have.
So we continue as, as we've been.
Continue as we've been.
Mr. Hamilton here at our meetings.
I, I think the more comfortable we get working together, the less time, I, I noticed that my, my money's gone down considerably. And that's probably a good thing for the city. Yeah, absolutely, so.
We're not trying to be mean about it.
Oh, I know. I get it. I get it. You guys are, y'all are in charge of the purse strings and, and I, I'll tell you, you know, I said over your time, I said, y'all just paid me two hundred dollars to sit here and watch all this. I mean, come on. That's not a good use of your money. But that's not taking place now, okay? So, not yet. There may be some plus in later on, but not now.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we just continue our process with Mr. Hamilton as, um, as we have been. Still showing to the meetings and using him as needed. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Moving on to Bravo, City of Ladonia Police Department. There. The, the person that was hired as chief of police reporting, his name was Andy.
Andy Lowen.
So he, he stopped showing up. And I would ask like, where is he? What are we gonna do? And then couldn't get back on the agenda. Uh, apparently he has employed someplace else. Teaklow called him and said, hey, what are you gonna do about the Ladonia Police Department? He said, I'm not working there anymore. And he gave them my name as the contact. So the, the sergeant that's in charge of this particular area, I forwarded you two emails. She said, hey, if, if you don't re-up on the thing, then what'll happen is you'll have to start the process all over. And so I, I told her, there'll be a meeting tonight, you will decide. And if we can't push this through the way it is, then I'll tell her. And say, gotta go on hold and it'll start all over again. Okay. And I, to tell you the truth, I don't know exactly where it stalled. The last I heard, it was something about evidence room, something like that. I don't know. Well, we, we obviously need a police officer.
Oh, right.
We, um, this is something we've been trying to do for a few months now and finally getting caught.
When they're asked what I know that whenever the, uh, last department was, or the last, you know, chief and all those guys were, were terminated, um, the mayor was able to step in basically. Is that still the case in this scenario? Or is this, they need someone actually who is a commissioned officer?
I think the mayor or someone else can be like a city marshal, but I'm not sure the mayor wants to do that.
Right.
I think it's.
The, but the other problem is, if you're gonna have a reserve force, what I understood, and I talked to Teaklow.
No, and I'm not saying a reserve force again. I'm.
Somebody's got to be paid.
Okay, right. So at this point, here's where we're kind of at a standstill on hiring someone, is that that was not worked into the budget last year fully. Um, it was worked in just enough to pay Mr. Lowen, whatever it was he agreed upon for, I believe, a part-time basis?
Yeah, I think that was right.
So that's going to be an issue, and I don't believe it was ever built into the tax base. So where was the money supposed to come from? Is the big question.
Yeah.
So that's where we're working now, like, how? How long do we have?
I can, I'll be happy to call that person up and say, look, the new budget season starts in a month. Can we have a month or forty-five days to work it into the budget and, and let you know?
And start pursuing.
I can, yeah. It, so long as I know you have, we're gonna, our effort's gonna be to try to budget the position. And if we do it fine, if we don't, then I'll have to tell her, hey, you'll have to, you'll have to put a check mark beside us and we'll start all.
Okay.
I'll, I'll call her tomorrow. You said you'll call her tomorrow? Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so I make a motion that we direct city staff, Mr. Hamilton, to reach out to Teaklow, to Ms. Jones, and, um, open that discussion if we can get an extension. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We move on to Charlie, maintenance and service of both city trucks. Anyone notice that?
I know. They need to be, they needed the oil. They haven't had an oil change in quite some time. And the Tundra also has some issues. The front end is very wobbly if you get over fifty-five miles an hour. It's what the water problems have told me.
One of them needs to be inspected and registered still from.
Yes. I think that's the.
I think so.
I think it's a check engine light is off, but that may be from the oil change. Do you have approximate cost?
No, because we don't even know what exactly is wrong with them.
So we had to take them to the shop and figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think.
Well, then I think the best action would be to just, uh, table this because we don't have.
Well, we need.
Yeah, so what's the, what's the mayor's individual authority for?
Five hundred dollars per month, per month.
We want to authorize him to spend up to five hundred dollars to take care of that?
Oh, he can do that without.
Without any.
Yeah, I'll take them and get that.
If we.
There you go. But we just table it until next meeting?
Yeah, that's what it's not.
Are we, hold on, are we, are we, uh, are we sending him to get quotes? So we, I mean, like the oil changes and things like that, obviously, we know those, everybody knows the ballpark figures of those. But as far as the front end, possible front end work on the Tundra.
That truck is not being used right now since we don't have a water person, so maybe focus on the Tundra, getting it up to going and, uh, see what's wrong with it. And then when we get back down and look at the other ones, since we're not really using it.
Tundra is, what year model is that Tundra? It's a nineteen? Twenty? Either a nineteen or a twenty. I can't remember.
So are we still paying?
We are not, no.
No.
The warranties are all, are all aged, but mileage wise, it doesn't have that many miles, so.
I can take it to a mechanic and come and sell it.
Okay.
So just want to table it and put it back on the agenda.
Just until we find out at least the quotes we're gonna have for it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table item eight C until next meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me write it down. Here you go. I'll take it to a few, we need to think of quotes.
Yes.
All righty, moving on to Delta, new Wi-Fi services for City Hall.
Alrighty, moving on to Delta, new wifi services for city hall.
The last, uh, service we had is being discontinued. Uh, so they've given us a quote to go with the air pod. Uh, the other option was being fiber optics and it's costing them like a five hundred dollars a month.
Oof.
Yes, the air. A hundred and five, basically.
Hundred and five, yeah.
Yeah, we're currently paying.
Premium because of the business, so that it doesn't.
It's on your account, it's on your account.
For ninety-seven sixty-six.
Ninety-seven sixty-six.
Okay. So, am I understanding this on the front page where it says premium plan with auto pay, it'd only be seventy dollars? Is that how everybody else thinks that?
I, yes, I think so.
Yes, that, that's how it reads, yes, that you have optioned out.
Yeah. I think that's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Oh, you've got the old one, you don't have the new one, sorry. I gave them, just.
Charter.
No, not that. It was ninety-seven, that was Lisa.
This is all of me, it's, uh.
And we're paying more than that now?
Paying ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven, six, six.
I think that, I don't know, I don't think that's.
Seven minutes, twenty something dollars.
I make a motion that we empower the mayor to save us money on our wifi services for city hall.
You need to speak, uh, what was that motion?
He made a motion to empower the mayor to, uh.
Save money.
Approve saving money for the new wifi cost for city hall.
Do we want it? To be done?
We're gonna put in the auto pay.
We're going from.
Discount.
Ninety-seven.
With this new.
Yep.
Worded that way, so that.
Okay.
Worded that way.
Alright.
The, the, the service we have now is being discontinued, um, at the first of the year.
At the first of the year, the service we have now is being discontinued, and what's our current rate?
Ninety-seven sixty-six is our current, like, reveal.
We're going, we're approving to go from nine six sixty-six.
Nine sixty-six.
Ninety-seven sixty-six to a seventy-dollar plan?
Okay, I'd like to revise my motion, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve the internet air quote premium plan as a replacement for our discontinued internet service.
With auto pay.
With auto pay.
I second that.
Second that, did y'all hear that?
No.
He made a mo, he made a motion to approve a switching over to the new wifi and internet plan. And Amy seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to Echo, after-hours phone for water department.
So actually, um, Patterson Water Group has an after-hours number that you can call, and it is listed out at the sewer ponds on those signs. Um, so we just need to update the website, update, or post it here at city hall, would be my suggestion.
So you just need to update the website and post it here?
Yeah, yeah, I think initially, in the past, when we actually had a water employee, they had a cell phone. At some point in time, that cell phone was disconnected, even though we still had an employee. But, so no one had a way to contact anyone if there was an issue overnight, such as the gas line that got hit.
Okay.
Um, I think you actually received that call, and then she had to get ahold of somebody. Um, but as it stands right now, with Patterson Water Group holding our license, they actually have an after-hours number.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we just, uh, update the website and post it here at city hall with the reflection of their after-hours. With Patterson.
Now, is Lisa having to use her phone?
No, ma'am. No.
She does need.
Oh, currently with Dallas, we exchange pictures to help him sort out what needs to be done. And people send me pictures of issues, so I've been having to use my personal phone to forward those to him.
Okay, so we need.
We need to reimburse her.
Texting because he's on the road so much.
Okay, so this, that's something different though, for after-hours phone. Um.
Do we have budgeted money for phone service that we can?
There should have been budgeted, at one point in time, there was actually a phone at city hall for that, right there, like she said, and the water department guys, or one of the water department, whoever.
Still don't have that phone?
Hmm?
Do we not have that phone?
They're somewhere, but it's. It's not in good shape, just put it that way.
Okay.
Um. So, but this particular agenda item was just for the after-hours phone, so.
So if it makes me to put the.
Can we, we cannot.
You can, you can put it on the next one and you can make it effective July or June, or whenever you're comfortable.
So, so we can retro?
Yes, ma'am.
And could we reimburse her for?
You can, you can say, we're gonna, we're gonna do, let's just pick out a number, fifty dollars a month, that's what I pay my staff for usually, and go. And that, that would have started in, in the.
The month that she started.
Whenever, whenever it was, whenever she started usually.
Okay.
You can do that, you gotta put it on the agenda next time.
Okay.
So right now, the motion is to update the website, to post the after-hour numbers and post it at city hall.
Yes, ma'am, and the vo, and change the, and on our voicemail.
Voice, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second Dana's motion, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
For y'all who, for those of you who did not hear that, we are updating the website and posting the after-hours number here at city hall.
Does, does Lisa have that number handy right now?
What is that number specifically to be used for? I don't want water public to abuse.
It'll be after-hours water emergencies.
Like a leak.
Leaks, stuff like that, yes. You have?
Yes.
Here, I got it.
Yeah.
Nine oh three, seven four four, two five nine nine.
Thank you.
Are y'all ready to move on to?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to Fox, new meter for well two.
Except, this right here was twenty-five, there's a, there's a. There's a page that gives the price of, uh, fixing the inside of the meter.
Twenty-nine eighty-three.
So replace the whole meter, it's gonna be a little over four thousand dollars, we can replace the, basically the guts for twenty-nine eighty-three. It's cheaper if we make the purchase, because if we have Patterson make the purchase, they're going to have a twenty percent up charge.
So the difference is labor per install, about a thousand dollars? And what was that total amount?
I'm sorry.
Do you know what that total amount is?
For the installation?
Right, for, for the parts and installation.
Uh, I don't know what the installation, cause they charge by the hour.
Okay.
And I believe it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for that, for those.
Do you know if they have an estimate for how long? Have a guess?
No, I don't.
That's right, thank you.
I'm.
I agree with that too.
It's the well two meter, I mean, the site, the, the meter itself has been busted for.
Sometime.
Sometime, tabling it for another month. With, to get the quote for the actual labor portion.
Okay, so what's the, what's the value of the information that we get from this, or whatever the meter does?
So it actually, it gives us how much water. Okay, hold on. So.
We're the basic understanding of what meters do.
Right, with the basic, so when, when she runs the reports at the end of the month, assuming that all of the meters have been read and read correctly, when you put that in, your water loss shows up. And it's based off of, this is how much shows have gone through the pumps, and this is what that tells us. Each well one and two both have these meters, it says, this is how much water have gone through each day. And they check that, they give us that number at the end of the month. You do some simple math, you get your numbers, you put that into R V S. It compares it to the readings that were entered and how much it shows that way. Then you get your water loss amount. If you are having greater than about fifteen percent water loss, you've got a couple of issues, either you've got a leak somewhere you don't know about. You've got people using water who are not actually being billed. You've got bad meters.
Yeah.
Um, I'm trying to think what else Lance told me it could be. Uh, those are, those are your basics.
Okay.
Um, so that's.
Some used on, a lot of the reports that the water department has to turn in.
Okay, alright, alright. So, do we have any idea what the lead time on getting these parts is?
I do not, it says it's available, so.
Okay. No, I think we, I think we get this on order and then approve the labor when it comes in. Okay, so I'll make a motion.
Replacing the meter, if, once you get all your numbers, to me, it seems like if the cost is close, more closer than it is different, wouldn't it be better warranty-wise to get a new?
How much is a new one again?
Little over. Around four thousand.
Around four thousand.
Yes, but this, this.
Replace the part.
Yes, this would get the meter running again.
But that's only right now, it was two thousand and, how much?
Two thousand nine hundred and eighty-three.
Then you gotta ask the labor to.
Yes.
So what I'm saying is, maybe it's better to get a new.
All you're paying for with the extra thousand is just that case that this piece goes in.
Right.
That's all you're paying, the extra thousand dollars for.
And you would still have labor to.
And you're still gonna have the labor to install it regardless.
New one come with a warranty?
No.
No.
Mm-mm.
Oh, okay.
No, they don't, unfortunately. Unfortunately, I mean, this is, this is a new, this is new, this part here itself is new.
Okay.
This is not a used part.
No, I understand.
All you're doing is you're taking, here's, here's your deal, you're taking the guts out.
Right.
And you're putting a new one in.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
What was that saying?
Neither one of them have a warranty.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
You made the motion to?
Make a motion that we authorize two thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars to acquire the M L I one dash four, four-inch micrometer propeller meter.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We move on to Gulf, cleaning of city hall.
Uh, she charges twenty-five dollars an hour.
Keep seconding that.
Nobody seconded anything? Oh, pardon me.
Not kidding.
Sorry.
Sorry, I've ten minutes.
I'm, I'm asking if we can possibly have, uh, someone come in to help clean the city hall for one hour twice a month. Um, it's not that I'm opposed to doing it, but I'm trying to be, work back here. And I, the other day, just cleaning up here to get it ready for a meeting, I'm working, I have to go back up front, and I have to go back up front, I have to go back, I have to go back.
You just need a little help, so.
Yes, yes.
Um. As a fact, we've had a couple volunteers already tell me that they would love to help clean up city hall. So I don't see that really being an issue, if y'all don't mind me telling them, that's fine.
Well, I think the person she, she had somebody that wanted to be paid, or your people wanting to volunteer, volunteer? Volunteer, volunteer, okay.
But, I have to talk to her again tonight and figure it out.
Right.
And, I'll be here. Um, it's carrying it. Um, not.
Do we wanna? You wanna see if the volunteer will do it, if not, then it'll have, that would have to be something if we.
If not.
We want, it's gotta be something that'll be worked into the budget next year. It's not.
Why?
Not, not, I'm talking, not.
Yeah.
But it still has, you can approve it, whatever, but it still has to be in the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why.
Alright, got you, just checking.
Yeah, no, it would still have to be budgeted for.
I got you. Alright, what y'all's call, whatever y'all wanna do. Uh, I can ask her tonight, and if she says no, then we can, tomorrow morning, we can fix it. I can let y'all know, but then at next meeting, which is not like a.
Right, yeah, we're gonna need to go our budget rockin', cause it's due by September, by October one.
Yep.
Let's just to table this at this time and let Justin and Laura handle the motion.
Uh, yeah, I'll make, yeah, I'll make the motion to table, uh, cleaning of city hall until the mayor can follow up.
Put it on the agenda again.
Probably work that. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
For those of you that don't hear, we table cleaning of city hall. We're, um, reaching out to a couple volunteer options before we make any decisions. Moving on to Hilo, hiring waterworks employee?
We don't have to, are, are we interviewing someone else, or?
I don't know.
Is this, Mr. Hamilton, how often do you have to repost a hire? It's already been posted in some. We don't. So are we interviewing somebody, is that what the other ones, or?
The main thing is just for y'all to decide, do we want to repost and try and hire somebody? Do you wanna go through the applications that you have and see if somebody appropriate, if we'd be willing to hire? Do we wanna do somebody part-time, full-time? That was basically what it is.
If we have Patterson here also, then I believe we need a full-time waterworks employee, I think we have.
Well. Kind of. I know, that's a hard.
Yeah.
Um. Say this, I'm trying to. Do. At, at this point in time, there's quite a bit of stuff that needs to get corrected.
Could you please speak up?
And, um. Would it be beneficial to have an actual licensed water sewer person? Yes, it would, honestly, it would also probably save us money in the long run over Patterson. Um. Whether or not we're gonna be able to find that's another question.
So we can spin our wheels on.
So, I mean, we have to keep Patterson until we, I mean, we could always, we could always post a position for an actual licensed water and sewer person, and not even bother interviewing anybody until we actually get somebody who has those licenses. Before we even consider interviewing.
Is that how you wanna do it?
That's my opinion on it.
Remember doing that?
That was public works, that's different, public works is different than water works.
Could we please hear what you're saying?
Well.
I can't. Okay.
Everybody's talking back there.
Yeah, and so.
I'll thank you.
If y'all will please be quiet in the crowd, then maybe you'd have a better time lis, hearing what we said.
You can't even hear what Amy's saying at all.
Well, it's cause Amy hasn't said anything.
She certainly has.
She charged, she started trying before you interjected, but that's neither here nor there, go ahead, Amy.
Do you think we should put it in the budget and, and then post?
She asked if we should put it in the budget.
Considering that we don't know what, I'm not even a hundred percent sure what the budget for last year looked like. That's probably our best bet, yes, cause we need to find out what the going rate is too. I think at this point in time, we have tried to do with bare minimum, and that's pretty much what we've gotten. Um, so, check with a few of the superintendents from a few others, a couple of other cities, um, and ask them what would be a comparable.
Salary.
Salary.
Right.
Um, for actual, the actual water sewer, someone who has a water sewer license. Um, and then under that, once we see how that's gonna go, then we do the whole public works portion, which is the mowing and the filling of the. potholes and things of those, of that nature.
So, essentially, you want to table it until we get our budgeting?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to. I mean, unfortunately, at this time, that's what we're gonna have to do.
But at least we know where we're going.
Okay, anyone wanna make a motion to table this?
Are there any more discussion?
I don't, I heard, I heard their, uh, comment, you have to amend your budget. Anytime you spend money as a city that's not already budgeted.
Yes.
The first question will be, where's the money coming from?
Right.
Because then, somebody has to amend that budget to move it from wherever it's pigeonholed to over to where you're gonna spend it. That's just a requirement.
Yes.
So, most cities do it every quarter, because you can't plan for the whole year. Thing you're just gonna come up, you got a well that went out, something's happened. But you have to say, where's the money coming from? And then there has to be, the, the city secretary needs to record, okay, I gotta do a budget amendment. And most people do them every quarter, and at the end of the year.
So I will make a motion that we table the hiring of a waterworks employee until after next fiscal year. Or, I'm sorry, after next fiscal year budget is adopted.
I'll second her motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And all this stuff just to.
Who wants to make the motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move, we adjourn.
At seven fifty-four.
Seconds.
I'll second it.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I'll second it.
Lisa's second, that, all in favor?
Aye.